Good evening and welcome to the January 23rd, 2017 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have two items to discuss, two general items, but before we begin, we have a formal announcement to make and Ryan's gonna make that.
Lucky me. Notice to the general public is hereby given that the Mayor and City Council of Gaithersburg plan to conduct special sessions on Wednesday, January 25th, and Thursday, January 26th, at 7:30 PM at the Kentlands Mansion, 320 Kent Square Road, solely to make a motion to hold closed executive sessions. Immediately following the special sessions, the Mayor and City Council will conduct closed executive sessions pursuant to the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305b1i regarding the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. The sole purpose of the closed sessions are to interview council applicants.
So, good segue into our next discussion item, which is, we are gonna have statements from our five finalists for the City Council appointment. Let me just preface this by saying for any of you in the audience who don't know the history here or watching, in October, we lost our dear colleague and friend, Henry Morafa, to leukemia after a nearly year-long battle. And we are going through the process to appoint someone to take Henry's place on the council until the next city election, which is in November of this year. We, everybody up here, all of our staff included, are extremely grateful for the number of people who applied and really excellent diverse group of people representative of the city of Gaithersburg. And so, we're very, very pleased with the applicants and we're especially pleased with our five finalists, any of whom we believe would be a fantastic addition to our City Council. The decision here is up, will ultimately be up to the members of the City Council. And we appreciate all of our candidates being willing to step up and speak tonight. We are not tonight taking testimony from the public, so if you would like to submit testimony on behalf of one or more, on the issue whatsoever, you're welcome to send us an email or try to give us a call. And I would suggest you do it over the next couple of days because this is sort of, this is the big week for this. Tonight, we're gonna have our public statements. Wednesday and Thursday, the council, we're going to go into closed session and interview each of the council candidates and where we'll have a chance to really fully consider. But what I would ask everyone here tonight to be very respectful and join us in gratitude for those who are stepping up and putting themselves out there for this. I do encourage you, after each candidate has made a statement, please do applaud, but I will say that the volume of your applause is not going to be, and it's not gonna impact the decision here, so I just wanna put that out there. To the candidates, generally when we do testimonies up here during meetings, there is a 30-second warning, but I'm, hopefully I have this set up, so it will just beep when your three minutes is up. And there will not be a 30-second warning because I figure everyone's gonna go to the 30 seconds, why take you off your game? So, but at three minutes, I'm gonna cut you off, just in fairness to everyone, everyone's getting the same three minutes, so those are the ground rules. There is a predetermined order of applicant statements this evening, and that was published with our agenda. The first speaker will be Jim McNulty. I'll start the timer whenever you start talking. Don't even worry about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council. It is an honor, it is a great honor to be considered for this appointment, and I want to congratulate the other four finalists and thank them for their service to our community. We all come to public service by way of our own path. Some arrive as the champion of a cause that's close to their hearts, others through opposition to a specific proposal or initiative. I stand here today as a means to pay something forward. Six years ago, my life was saved by the Montgomery County SWAT team. For four hours, I was held hostage at Discovery Channel headquarters in Silver Spring. Since that day, I've actively looked for opportunities where I can do the most good. Not just through public service, but by taking leadership roles where the need arose. As you know, leadership means more than just getting involved. It means getting out in front, bringing people together, working with all stakeholders and building a consensus, and working towards a common goal. You need someone you know that you can work with for the next nine months to tackle the issues that are affecting our city. As we continue to explore ways to stimulate economic development, we need to ensure that the rising tide of growth lifts all boats, not limiting ourselves to the technology corridor, but also reinvesting in our legacy neighborhoods like Old Town and along the 355 corridor. But our efforts cannot be focused solely on business development. We need creative solutions to develop our people as well. MCPS Superintendent Dr. Jack Smith included funds in his 2018 budget for apprenticeship programs. This highlights an opportunity to explore public-private partnerships for vocational education, not just for high school students, but expanding the scope to include retraining programs for adults, giving our local businesses a direct pipeline into the next generation of skilled labor, and creating new opportunities for our residents who might still be sitting on the sidelines of our growing economy. Of course, all these opportunities for growth, both in breadth and in density, begin to stretch our resources thin. We must ensure that our outstanding police department continues to receive the resources it needs to properly protect and serve our city, and work to strengthen our partnerships with neighborhood watch programs so we can do more to prevent crime and not just respond to it. These challenges and opportunities all come with a price tag, and with budget season fast approaching, this is when hard decisions have to be made, where priorities are set, and where consensus must be built through continued responsible leadership and sound fiscal planning. I stand ready to work with the Mayor and Council alongside our outstanding city staff, and I sincerely appreciate your consideration for this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Yvette Monroe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanna thank you very much for this opportunity, for the, to apply for this council position, and I wish the best for my fellow constituents. I stand here before you as a wife, a mother, a grandmother, a friend, a school liaison, a committed citizen, and a community servant, at a time where we're experiencing great change all around. If you asked me in my twenties if I would carry all these titles this phase of my life, the answer would have been no. But as I'm standing here today, my answer is yes. Having the opportunity to make a difference is something that I'm glad to do and enjoy. As I talk with neighbors and business owners or just concerned people, I'm finding that there are many people like myself who choose to make a difference by developing relationships with those who have similar thoughts and ideas of community that will foster growth in living, in business, education, and leisure lifestyles. For me, my steps to change have been small but consistent. I started out just volunteering my children's schools, and then being a member of the Education and Old Town Advisory Committees, volunteering for the various events that we have here in the city, serving our 10% schools, and those are just a few things that I've done just to be able to do my part and to make a change in this diverse community. I'm excited at the thought of adding to the already growing number of projects currently going on here in the city, and bringing new ideas for expansion and revitalization in the areas that are needed, such as Lake Forest and the Old Town Corridor, and developing more intergenerational programs, and keeping our schools, of course, a priority with our continued partnership with MCPS so that our children's needs will not go forgotten. With so many new and expanding businesses and mixed-use developments, parks and cultures on the horizon, and with our transportation options growing, I look forward to ensuring that Gaithersburg will continue to be a community of innovative businesses and support and stability, promotes affordable housing, and a great place to live, work, and play. I would serve this community as I serve at my job, in my church, and on the committees that I'm involved with, with diligence and with patience, spending time, talking to the people in the community, listening to what their greatest needs may be, and finding all available resources to meet those needs. As I stand here in this moment, I'm reminded of Henry Morafa, who was bold in his beliefs in making changes in this city that would benefit everyone. I too will work to make those changes that will benefit the city, but not all alone. It takes all of us working together, making a difference in the place that we all call home, and I look forward to doing so, one person, one business, and community at a time.
Our next candidate is Jose Contreras.
Mr. Mayor, Honorable Members of the Gaithersburg City Council, my name is Jose Contreras, and I am seeking your appointment to the Gaithersburg City Council. For over 20 years, I've answered the call to service as an activist and community leader. I've spent 15 years in my profession helping the federal government find better ways to serve the people of this nation. If I am privileged to serve on the council, I would work with my colleagues to provide good responsive government, and to strengthen our relationship with our colleagues and our residents so that together, we can find better ways to serve our people. As HOA Treasurer of the wonderful Parklands community, I had to become a quick study of development, transportation, education, and other issues that affect our growing city. It's an exciting time to live in Gaithersburg. Recent development has brought new housing, business, and retail, but as our city continues to grow, we need to find new ways to more effectively provide quality service for our residents. At the same time, we mustn't forget those communities, businesses, and organizations that for many years have formed the heart of this city. We need to revitalize Old Town, being respectful of the history and the character that defined us for over a century. We need to develop a new vision for Lake Forest and 355 that meets the needs of today's Gaithersburg. We need to make sure all our schools can provide a quality learning environment for all our children. I've witnessed the importance of strong collaboration at all levels of government. Just last year, when I worked on an online campaign to fight for the I-270 Watkins Mill Interchange, I witnessed the voice of our city come alive. With our elected officials at the city, county, and state levels, we all sent a loud and clear message that went all the way to Annapolis. I hope to bring this kind of inclusive and participatory government to other issues that affect our community. My parents moved to Gaithersburg in 1982 so that my brothers and I could grow up in a safe, affordable home, receive an outstanding education, and form part of a vibrant community. I still have fond memories of going on a field trip from Gaithersburg Elementary just down the street to the post office. I remember the bustling Lake Forest Mall with its ice rink, movie theater, and a large water fountain. I still think fondly of the days when my dad worked construction at the IBM Data Center. Lot has changed since then, but when it came time to start my own family, it only made sense that I'd come back to the city where I had such wonderfully memorable childhood. As the second generation of Contreras' children begin to make their own fond memories, these words by Sesar Chavez best describe why I seek your appointment. We cannot seek achievement for ourselves and forget about progress and prosperity for our community. Our ambitions must be broad enough to include the aspirations and needs of others, for their sakes and for our own.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Loriann Sales.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, staff, and members of the general public. My name is Loriann Sales, and I come before you today to share my vision and priorities for the future of Gaithersburg. My family chose to live in Gaithersburg because of the quality of life it affords. We love its small-town feel, its abundance of parks and recreational offerings, and the endless opportunities it provides to get involved. I'm particularly proud of its designation as the most diverse city in the country. Like you, I want to live in a community that informs and engages its citizens, a community that preserves and acknowledges its historic roots, one that celebrates our differences, nurtures our environment, and embraces our growth. As a member of the Gaithersburg City Council, I look forward to playing a part in collectively achieving that vision. I'm no stranger to Gaithersburg government, through my leadership roles from serving as a member of the city's Education and Richment Committee, to my current role as a member of the Business and Economic Development Committee. I've listened to the concerns of our city's residents, community activists, and business leaders, and rolled them my sleeves to make our community even better. I have heard from residents concerned about our city's phenomenal rate of growth. As a member of the City Council, I'll work with my council colleagues to make sure that even as we grow, we continue to remain debt-free while maintaining a low tax rate. I will ensure that we meet major economic challenges, such as the redevelopment of Old Town, Lake Forest Mall, and the Kentlands, with solutions that showcase our city's design excellence and commitment to environmental stewardship. I've heard from developers eager to bring development projects to the city. I look forward to improving our working relationships with developers and the community, while at the same time, ensuring our new and established communities remain safe, affordable, and attractive places to live, work, and play. I'm especially proud of our designation as the most diverse city in the country, and want to ensure that we positively leverage this attribute. I want to strengthen the ties between the council and the community to ensure our residents are engaged and informed. I believe we can explore cost-effective ways to expand the flow of electronic forms of communication while reaching and involving our diverse residents in the Up County, from senior citizens and youth to new arrivals. I'm committed to Gaithersburg and believe my extensive policy and communications background, local leadership, and community involvement make me a qualified candidate. I'm hardworking, driven, and a self-starter who works well with others. I'm determined to use my position as council member to ensure our city government is responsive and relevant. I've heard from thousands of residents across the city.
Thank you, Loriann.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Let's give her a round of applause. All right, and our next and final speaker is Jim Roffas.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to come and share my ideas. I think there are three areas that are key to understanding a public official's vision for service. First and foremost, or at least to begin with, background and qualifications. So, I've lived in Gaithersburg with my wife, son, daughter, and mother-in-law for more than a dozen years. Gaithersburg isn't just a place to live, it's our home. I have more than two and a half decades of government service and leadership, starting at very low levels, working in the trades, and ultimately rising to the senior executive service. My experience has spanned a wide range of programs, including financial management, financial management, public safety and emergency management, veterans issues, natural resource management, data and technology management, strategic planning, and government performance management. I've served my community in a wide variety of ways, both large and small, and across all of this, key factors for success have included innovation, which is finding creative ideas to solve hard problems in government, collaboration, working with people with different perspectives, and often with different objectives, to find common ground and a way forward, and integrity. Of course, that means being always honest, but also working hard and maintaining an unflagging focus on the needs of citizens. Second area is issues and priorities. I'm not a single-issue candidate, or even a limited set of issues candidate. I'm fundamentally a candidate for good government, and that's much in the same way that Thomas Jefferson meant good government, which is that government fundamentally exists to serve its citizens. I believe Gaithersburg is a great city today. However, Gaithersburg is not immune to change, and so, we must be prepared to adapt. Council members must be prepared to make the best decisions possible in light of inevitable changes. Now, no candidate can be an expert on all topics that come before the City Council, not even one with this broader range of experiences as I have. That means that I think that we need to be data and fact-driven. We need to use data and facts to inform our decisions. That doesn't mean that we should ignore our emotions or our judgment, we just need to be sure that our opinions are based in fact and not just personal preference. Finally, I believe that transparency and accountability for government and its officials is critical. Government works best when the people it serves, that's all of the people it serves, know what's happening and feel they have a say in its direction. So, the last piece is motivation, and I think this is the most important piece. Any serious contender knows that it requires sacrifice. For me, it's giving back to the community. It is, I feel good when I do well for others.
Now, as you can all see, we have our work cut out for us. We have five outstanding candidates. Let's give them another round of applause. We are very grateful for them putting themselves out there, as I said, and I hope that you all join us in that gratitude. So, as I mentioned, we will be conducting these interviews on Wednesday and Thursday, and so, our process will go on, and we appreciate everyone coming out and being a part of our process. If you're, if you have anything that you'd like to share with us, please feel free to send emails this week. This will be the good week. So, Nick, we're gonna move on to our next discussion topic, which is discussion on pesticide use within the city and as it relates to state and county legislation. We have Diane back. Everyone is welcome to stay, but you're, but you're not, you know, obligated to stay.
Good evening, Mayor Ashman and Council Members.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Make it sure. I'm here before you tonight to follow up on the discussion of pesticide usage on both private and public property. You will recall I was last before you in June to discuss this topic. My discussion tonight includes an update to county, state, and federal actions regarding pesticides, as well as information regarding both private and public use, usage of pesticides. To begin our discussion, I'd like to mention that the County's Healthy Lawns Act is currently under appeal. The appeal does address the county's ability to enforce regulations beyond what the state requires regarding pesticide usage. It should be noted that this appeal does not include the county's ability to restrict pesticide usage by the county on county public lands, which has already gone into effect, that portion. Looking at the state level and impact to private property within Gaithersburg, the Pollinator Protection Act includes limitations for the use of neonic pesticides. This goes into effect in 2018 and restricts the entities able to apply neonic pesticides and includes retail restrictions as well. Pollinator habitat plans are another aspect of the state's regulation, and those require state agencies owning or managing land or property to consult with the Maryland Department of Agriculture to establish the pollinator protection plans. At the federal level, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency is reviewing four neonic pesticides as part of a pesticide registration review program. Some preliminary assessments have been released, however, the final review is not complete. A preliminary risk assessment for emetoclophrid was released in January of 2016. The final review is anticipated to be completed in 2018. I'd like to note that restrictions from the EPA primarily concentrate on protecting managed, commercial farming honeybees, and may potentially restrict the use of neonic pesticide in agriculture. It is not anticipated that the EPA would establish restrictions on residential property unrelated to honeybees in commercial agriculture. The EPA does state that they will continue to encourage efforts by states to reduce pesticide exposure to bees and other insect pollinators through locally-based measures. In seeking guidance from the Mayor and Council tonight, staff is recommending that the best course of action for the city is to exemplify the change that we'd like to see in the community. In the same vein as the city has moved forward with smoking on city property, the city should consider a transition away from the internal use of synthetic pesticides, setting an example for private property owners, and acting as a resource of experience with natural measures of lawn care. Now, you will recall that I mentioned some issues with the County's Healthy Lawns Act in terms of private property during my previous presentation to you in June. These include legality and enforceability. Some examples include it would be difficult to determine when a private property owner applied a restricted pesticide, or when that pesticide was applied, if it was done before a ban were to go into effect, or after. Also, how would staff be notified of such usage? Would it be complaint-driven by neighbors? So, those are some of the issues that were raised previously and still remain. If the Mayor and Council were to issue guidance to staff to create a non-regulatory outreach and education campaign on natural lawn care options, these are some potential options before you that could be included as part of this type of campaign, and would require the inclusion of a budget item in the Environmental Services Budget for the upcoming fiscal year. This type of outreach would focus on the positives of action opposed to the negative effects of pesticides. Also, to mention, a University of Maryland master-level capstone project made recommendations to staff, to myself, which include also considering multimedia, such as Facebook or Twitter, to provide educational and community sport information. Also, the students mentioned that it would be helpful to utilize the city's website so that people could gain access to regular updates on pest management practices and other aligned public outreach campaigns, and links to other organizations for support. Moving on to the internal use, city operations usage of pesticides, which is illustrated here on this slide for you. There are approximately 50 locations without the city, throughout the city. This includes areas, fence lines, baseball fields, sidewalks, tree rings, the annual expense for the current product that is used, which is Roundup Quick Pro, which as you can see, it's a type of post-emergent herbicide. 67 pounds approximately of the concentrate are utilized by staff at this time for an annual expense of approximately $2,000. Now, to consider alternative products, and I should mention that this is a chart looking at product to product, so another option is to, instead of using spot treatment for certain areas, to move towards a more holistic view of lawn care, and do other things like eration and soil amendments. This doesn't factor in all of that in this equation, but we did ask staff at Public Works on Park Maintenance to consider what the cost would be of switching, and it's $13 about for 10 gallons of Roundup Quick Pro, whereas Avenger, which is a broad-spectrum weed killer, is $225 for 10 gallons. Or Nature's Wisdom, more of a concentrated vinegar product, is about $179 for 10 gallons.
Diane, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
With regard, and I, not to put you on the spot, but with regard to the county law, doesn't, doesn't the county law exempt ball fields and like flower beds, places where, you know?
Correct.
Yeah, so...
Yes, you are correct on that.
Just...
So, this is, this is just a consideration of what the city could potentially do outside of the county law on our own in terms of moving to more natural lawn care. But you are correct, this, this would be exempt in certain areas, areas of the city if we were to opt into the Healthy Lawns Act, where it was, you know, a field of lawn, that would apply, but for ball fields, there are exemptions in the county's direction towards the county parks.
Thank you.
Another quick question for you.
Sorry, I didn't see where it's coming from.
I get to go first, sorry. The, when you talk to, looked at the price of the substitutes?
Yes.
Is it gallon for gallon? Do you need the same amount?
That's another issue I was going to bring up, thank you for mentioning it. It's anticipated... It's anticipated by Parks Maintenance Staff that more product would be necessary, that it wouldn't be quite as effective, and that additional treatments would be necessary. So, whereas, um, you know, don't have someone here to ask, but say you get six weeks of treatment with Roundup Quick Pro, you may get a week with Avenger. You know, without doing a pilot or case study with Park Maintenance Staff, it'd be tough to know ahead of time, you know, exactly what kind of cost they would be looking at. And as time went by, perhaps less of these alternative products or more natural products would be needed because the soil amendments and all of the other, excuse me, would start to benefit the soil.
So, Diane, if I'm reading this correctly, that the 50 designated locations are where we've used the Roundup, does that also mean that, for example, our overwhelming green states in the city, you know, the entire lawn over at Bora Park, we don't touch it with any kind of herbicides or pesticides?
Not on a wholesale basis, no, correct.
But on a spot treatment basis? Because I think this was one of the questions I had back in June, is I wanted to get a grasp of what we're using, where we're using it, how much we're using it throughout the city properties.
Right. My understanding is that the city staff don't let a certain area get so far gone that you need to, you know, basically kill everything that's there and start from scratch. So, we don't have that kind of instance, which a private property owner might actually have. You know, the yard, yard might be so far gone that they need to just get rid of what's there and put new turf in. From Mark Scafidi, I've understood that that's not an issue here in Gaithersburg. It's more these little areas, these tough areas like the tree rings. You know, what do you do? Because as you'll see on another slide, um, you don't want to damage the roots of the trees, and then there are some alternative projec, products like these type of mats that you can put, but apparently that's not so great for the tree either. Damage to the bark and...
Didn't Bora Park used to be a sod farm? Yeah, so?
So, doing pretty well.
Yeah.
One follow-up question.
Sure.
Did, did we confirm that if we are using manure or mulch, that it doesn't have an herbicide component to it?
I, I did not. I was not aware of that question, but I can find out. I'll take a note of that.
So, one more question before we go on. Uh, the, um, alternative products are all, um, natural and biodegradable? They don't, they have synthetic toxins in them?
Correct, the Avenger and the vinegar product. Natural, organic, exactly.
All right, go, go ahead, sorry to interrupt.
Sure, no problem, um, I just make sure I didn't miss something. So, um, right, I did mention, um, you may need to use more of the, the, call it alternative, but the, the more natural products. And, um, sorry. If Cruz, if Cruz were to switch to these alternative or natural products, um, they would possibly have, uh, see more wear and tear on machinery due to increased usage, and also there's a concern about the fences, um, the warning tracks along the baseball fields and outfield. You know, if they're getting that equipment closer to the fence, they might end up nicking the fence. Need to repair or replace those more, more often. My recommendation at this time is to implement an outreach and education campaign regarding the safe use of synthetic pesticides and to introduce more natural alternatives and methods. Consideration of regulatory measures could be addressed at a later date when more information is available from the EPA and once the appeal is decided for the county's act. So, as I mentioned, staff's not recommending the city at this time either opt into the County Healthy Lawn Act. During the appeal, I don't even know that that could be, that the county would consider that. Um, and as I mentioned, the, uh, it would be useful for Parks Maintenance Staff to have a time period of adjustment towards these products, to find out the costs associated and, um, where they work, where they don't work, and to learn more, perhaps with quarterly, um, uh, meetings with experts in the field. There are some local experts that have experience with using these products, say, on ball fields, and then other experts with, um, natural turf areas. So, uh, thank you for your attention and consideration of this matter. I'd like to thank Jennifer Quinn and Alex Tavitsi-Zynidin of the Safe Grow Montgomery Group for sharing their expertise with me and also the University of Maryland students. So, I also want to mention that if there were to be a transition for the city's Park Maintenance Division, um, this type of reduction in the annual gallon usage of synthetic pesticides could be measured via critical measures. So, you could show, you know, on the axis, X-Y axis, a, a reduction in usage over, over time.
Great, thank, thank you, Diane.
Sure.
Thanks for, uh, for all the work that you've put in, into this, and, and I see that there are, there are a whole lot of unsettled matters that are, that are about, both at the state and the county levels.
Federal, too.
And at the federal level, and, and all of those levels, uh, in this case, happen to be better positioned to, to really, um, come up with a legislative prescription for this, for pesticides, uh, because they, they have a larger jurisdiction than we have, and they have more legislative authority to regulate what's in stores and what's not in stores. That said, I, I, um, I appreciate the staff recommendations of, um, uh, looking at a pilot program to start getting the measures and see how effective some of these other things may be, um, vis-à-vis the, um, the synthetic. What is the, what, we'll start with Neil.
So, I really appreciate the, the work that's gone into this and the thoughtfulness. I think that I was very excited to see the slide with the options for an outreach campaign. I've been, I've said this before, I think that outreach to the community is actually critical here. And even if, even before we're prepared to move forward legislatively, there's no reason to not go ahead and communicate what people can do to make their environment safer and to ultimately reduce their usage of these kinds of products by having healthier turf in their, in their own property. Also, really like the idea of having the city set an example. I, and I fully appreciate the, the, uh, staff's concern over doing this whole hog without knowing what's going to work where. So, I, I really, uh, think that the concept of a pilot program makes good sense. I know when this has come up before, you've heard me say this before, but I apologize or repeat it. When we went through this whole process at the Kentlands, that's exactly what we did in both fronts. We did a lot of communication to the public. Um, we did, uh, significant pilot programs throughout the community because we discovered that one spot is not the same as another. Some spots are shady, some spots are sunny, some spots are heavily used and some aren't. So, there's no one-size-fits-all approach. But ultimately, all the research shows that, uh, if you move toward more natural regimes for taking care of your turf, ultimately, the turf is healthier and you need to do much less work going forward. So, that, the, the fact that the short-term cost is significantly higher doesn't disturb me as long as we measure everything and, and work toward a goal of, of healthier turf and hopefully some cost savings once we get down that road. Uh, and also, again, doing this for the city and communicating to the public how they can do for themselves and really doing very significant outreach, not just publishing brochures and putting information on websites, but doing seminars and things like that, and doing a lot of it. I think it's going to take a lot to, to really teach people how to do this properly.
Thank you, Neil. Go ahead.
I agree with what Neil said, I appreciate all the work that's been put into this. Uh, you know, I think this cost factor, it, it's tricky analysis. I mean, we've been talking about being data-driven, fact-driven in our decision-making. When you try to compare apples to apples in this slide, which we know isn't the full story, it's sort of an attempt to kind of simplify what really are apples and oranges. I mean, you see something like a 15 times more expensive product. Uh, but then again, you know, if you have to use that product even more often, then it's really more than 15 times more expensive. On the other hand, if you take a step back and look at this, you know, from a, uh, from a, a higher level, what is 15 times the $2,000 cost? I mean, the $30,000 is not chump change, but relative to our overall budget, it's really not very much at all, and it's something I think the city could afford if we decide that in comparing those apples and oranges, there are, um, tangible and intangible positives to get from spending that money. So, I agree with Neil that in the short-term, additional cost should not necessarily be a barrier to moving forward. And of course, as demand for these types of products increases as they become more mainstream over time, you know, the hope, I think, is that the cost will go down as you see with things like solar panels and alternative fuel vehicles. Uh, sometimes the demand initially gets created by regulation, and then later, the need for regulation kind of falls off i- in the economic curve. So, that may be happening years from now as well. Of course, you know, we only have a limited ability to control and, and influence the market as opposed to, as the mayor said, federal, county, state, uh, regulations, which can really make a bigger impact, uh, on the market going forward. But I do think we need to lead by example, as you said. Um, so, I think the staff's recommendations make sense as a first, a big first step, uh, not an end of our discussion, but a, an important first step in our discussion, um, particularly on the outreach piece, which we need to budget for so that we can do those things. Um, and in the, um, pilot project for certain, um, you know, spot treatments around, around the city to get a sense, at least on our own city property, to get a sense from our staff what works and what doesn't, and what the costs and benefits of those treatments will be through a, uh, through a pilot project. I did want to ask, um, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, or maybe Lynn knows the answer, where exactly is the appeal in terms of the process right now for the county's law?
Yeah, I, I can't answer that question. The suit has just been very recently filed, so it's in the very, very early stages. They haven't even issued a sketching order yet. So, you know, it's probably going to be a year plus before that's resolved.
Okay, so is it really an appeal, or is it just sort of in a, in a lost, initial trial court posture?
It's a trial court posture, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, not administrative appeal.
Lynn, do we know the scope of the suit? Like, the Healthy Lawns Act, for example, had substantive requirements, but it also had like notice issues. Are those under, as part of the suit as well? Are they trying to say you can't regulate little signs that you're putting on people's lawns?
Yeah, my understanding, and I have to admit I'm not well-versed in, in the litigation, but they are seeking to overturn the act as a whole.
Okay.
And who's "they"?
Uh, there are several individuals, it's a group of individuals who have filed suit.
Associated with the businesses that provide the kind of service?
Mostly, yes.
Okay.
I believe that there are 15 individuals.
It's not just consumers and retailers, et cetera?
Do you have any other comments?
Well, no, I just, uh, you know, I think Ryan and Neil have been pretty comprehensive in their comments. I agree that staff's done a great job, provided us with some good alternatives. I think the most important thing we can do as a city is lead by example. We have to, you know, put our own house in order first. I think some, so, some pilot programs or pilot efforts to, to look at the advantages and disadvantages and challenges of, uh, moving to, um, organic-based, non-synthetic, uh, use of pesticides, whether they're herbicides or for insects, uh, makes sense, uh, as we, and investigate that. I, I agree that we can certainly afford to do this, at least the initial, at the initial scale, and, uh, as, as Ryan suggested, I think the costs of these things are going to come down, so. But, um, we should, I think we, we need to go ahead and plan for the outreach regardless. But again, if we're going to outreach and, and, uh, provide that education, we have to educate ourselves, our city, uh, our staff, and make sure that our, that our, that our Public Works folks can manage this and, uh, and, and find out how feasible it is in the long term as well. So, thank you very much for this report.
Sure.
I agree with the recommendations at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Diane, thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
Um, I, I agree with my colleagues. I think we should be setting the example, um, and we should be moving forward, particularly on our property. Uh, it, it looks like a very small expense, relatively speaking, for us to send a very clear message, which is, you know, we're the second-largest, third-largest, fourth-largest city in Maryland, and we're pesticide/herbicide-free. So, I would, I, I encourage us to move in that direction. In order to move in that direction, um, I, I think we, we, we need to get a, a handle on exactly what we're using. I appreciate the information about the 50 locations, um, where we are using herbicide. I didn't see any message or any information about pesticide usage, uh, which would be interesting as well. You know, do we use any pesticides to kill ants, wasps, things around the city? Diane, do you have any, do you have any insight on that?
I, I do not.
Okay. Just a question to throw out there.
Tony? We, I know we do kill wasp nests from time to time, uh, on our own properties, under eaves and things like that.
Not with a fly, a swatter, though?
No.
Like with an actual chemical?
Yes.
So, so I would like, I would ask that the staff get a, a handle on, um, not only the herbicide usage, but also the, the pesticide usage that would have fallen under the Healthy Lawns Act, um, as well as that question I had before about the components, because I know some mulches, some manures also have components in them as well.
Sure.
Um, because the more we know, the further we can go.
Right. Um, to mention also, Mark Covers, um, going to be in contact with some of the nursery companies to see if the supply of the plants, um, comes from the neonic-coated seeds or not. There are apparently many companies that we buy plants from, um, so it, it could take a little, a couple of phone calls to find out.
Yeah, the ones that actually have the treated seeds.
Or how many, right.
Yeah, I, I would just like that information, if it's at all possible.
Okay, sure.
Also, I would like to be pettiprized of, and maybe this might be in Lynn's, um, court, is, is, as the Healthy Lawns Act suit progresses, I, I would like to know more about how it's going, what issues are, or, or aren't being resolved. Because I, I think if the notification requirements aren't something that's covered in the lawsuit, that's something that's more of a regulatory rather than a substantive function. Like, you're not telling people you can't apply pesticides to your lawn. You're just saying you need to tell folks that when you're doing it. So, I think that's something we could act on if it's not currently covered by the suit, because I do agree, we shouldn't, as a city, get ahead of what is currently under suit in the county. Uh, we should be at, at least, um, following that and being ready to act, whatever the outcome from there. And of course, we should be working with our state officials to, um, adopt statewide policies that are conducive for a greener lifestyle for all of us. Yeah, but good presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. Um, is, is there anyone from the, if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this issue, uh, please line up behind Diane at the podium, and, uh, we ask that you keep your comments to no more than three minutes and say your name and address or neighborhood for the record. Would anyone like to, to speak this evening? Please, come on up.
Alex would like to speak.
Alex, all right.
I, I didn't realize we'd have this opportunity, but I did, uh, sorry. My name is Alex Tavitski-Zynidin, and I'm at 112 Kent Square Road in Gaithersburg, Maryland, and I'm also a member of the Safe Grow Montgomery, um, group that advocated for this law on the Montgomery County level. So, uh, I do have a letter that I sent in earlier today, so you might as well read that. And thank you so much for your, um, your, your work and your consideration on this matter. And this is, uh, from Safe Grow Montgomery, our, our group. Dear Gaithersburg City Council, Safe Grow Montgomery and Gaithersburg City residents are pleased that the mayor and city council are having a working session on the ways that the city of Gaithersburg could incorporate Healthy Lawns Act, Montgomery County M.D. Bill 5214, into the city's current lawn care practices. As you know, Montgomery County Council members passed Healthy Lawns Act to reduce exposure to pesticides used in lawn care due to health concerns. Many Gaithersburg residents support the County Healthy Lawns Act and should be protected by similar laws, given the fact that they live in Montgomery County, but in a city that is incorporated. According to a 2012, a report issued by the American Academy of Pediatrics, regular exposure to low levels of pesticides can have serious acute and long-term health effects, including pediatric cancers, decreased cognitive function, and behavioral problems. Landscaping pesticides was cited as a, cited as a mechanism of exposure. City of Gaithersburg's Environmental Affairs Committee voted unanimously for the city to opt into this law as well. Safe Grow Montgomery strongly urges you to take action and minimize exposure to pesticides used in lawn care, not only for your residents, but also for the city staff that applies these pesticides. By adopting measur, measures to reduce the use of unnecessary pesticides in lawn care, you will also be improving water quality, minimizing exposure to pets and people, and helping bring back pollinators that are necessary to sustain our food ecosystem. Thank you for taking, uh, up this very important issue.
Thank you. Thanks for really bringing it to our attention and, and, um, helping to educate us about it. We appreciate it. Do we have any other speakers this evening on this topic? Okay, not seeing any. And Diane, did Diane just leave? Okay, there. I, I heard somebody leave, I'm like, okay. Diane, do you feel, from the comments up here, do you feel guided?
I, I do.
Okay.
I guess you might see some things in the budget when it comes before you related to this, so that won't be a surprise for you.
Okay.
Now, I, I have one last comment. In terms of, um, going forward with a pilot program, I think the pilot program could tie in really well to the community outreach, because you can say, "Go look at this spot here and this spot here and see how we're doing."
Good point.
So, that people can...
Good point.
So that people can see it for themselves.
Sure.
I think that's really important, that as we, as the city goes through the process and learn, that we give the citizens a chance to share in that learning experience and see for themselves.
Exactly, sure.
Very good point.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's the last item on our agenda this evening. As I mentioned, we, the council and I and staff will be conducting our interviews on Wednesday and Thursday, and so wish us luck in this difficult process. Next week is District 17 Night on Monday night in Annapolis, and we are running one bus, Tony? Is that, we're running a bus? Is it full?
It is full or very close to full.
Okay. Well, if you would like to join us, please make plans for your own transportation to get over there, but we'd be delighted to have you with us next Monday. And then the following Monday, which, I'll tell you what the date is, just a sec. February 6th is the next regular meeting of the mayor and city council. So until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.